You're all set.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 11th zoning board hearing. Before we get into some quick general business, I do have the minutes from the last hearing that I need to have the board members sent to. If you've all had the opportunity in your package to review these, I will need a motion. We have...
Make a motion and accept.
A motion by John. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? That's unanimous. Pass this down to Kelly for me, please. We have a hearing at 7:05. In your point benches. Mr. Antonellis, are you the attorney in fact for this one?
Yes, I am. For the record, Joseph Antonellis on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Chairman, I respectfully request the second continuance. The, as I mentioned to you the last time, the planning board and town planner had some concerns about the actual layout of Silver Hill Road and Congress Street and how that affected this parcel. The surveyors have not finished the work yet. I do have a meeting tomorrow morning with the town engineer and the town planner to go over the survey results that they exist as of now. So I respectfully request that we continue until the November meeting. I apologize to the residents who came out tonight. And as a matter of courtesy, notwithstanding the fact that the abuders list is very long because of the condominium, if you pick a date in November and a time, I'll be more than happy to renotice all of the abuders by regular mail.
Okay. We are scheduled for November 11th. I mean, November 8th is the zoning board hearing. If that changes, I don't think it will. I believe we're on schedule for that for 11th, for November 8th. So with that, Joe, I am just going to have you execute this continuance.
Thank you. I apologize. I meant to bring a letter requesting it, but as we were getting ready for the meeting, we lost power in our building.
Kelly, would you make sure this gets a copy, gets out to Joe on this continuance?
And then I, what I'll do is I'll just renotice the hearing in the same manner you would for November 8th.
November 8th.
November 8th at 7:05.
7:05.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
For the benefit of the audience, this was on the hearing for Congress Street and Silver Hill Road, consisting of 13,480 square feet, more or less parcel of land. That is, again, as Mr. Antonellis indicated, it's continued. So we have not opened up this hearing. We're not hearing the hearing. It's an indication by, by the attorney in fact for the applicant and the owner apparently that they need some more time. So with that, Attorney Antonellis was, was good enough to be able to provide. Everyone that's on the abuders list will get, will get a letter in the mail to verify that meeting date. So please make sure that you throw that on your calendar or you just make note to it. If you have any questions or you may think that you may have missed a date, please call the zoning officer at Kelly Town Hall and we'll be happy to make sure that. It's also posted on the town's website, the hearing dates as well. So if you have that mechanism, that's also possible. Okay. All right. So Kelly, at the end of the night, that'll have to get copied in an email and a, you know, copy sent out to Joe. We have to, we have a, let me do a quick housekeeping venue before the next hearing. We got about three minutes. The board, of course, as you know, has got a, we need to fill a vice chairman's position. Joe D'Antonio retired after many years of service to this community and the board. And we thank, of course, Joe for all he has done for this community and especially for this board. So I'd like to entertain a motion. If a board member has a motion on a vice chairman, I'd like to entertain a motion. And no one wants it? No one wants it?
Hey, I'll nominate Joe Mustriani.
I'll second that. Boy.
Anybody else? Any other nominations? If not, there's a motion and a second to elect John Mustriani as vice chairman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Congratulations. Effective next week, I will not be here for the next seven months.
We call on you every month and you're coming, right?
All right. With that, we have a, we have also a continued hearing for Ultra Signs Corporation. They here? Yes. Come on up. Okay. This is on a continued hearing. We had a lengthy hearing the last time. I think there's been some, some clarification with the town planner, from what I understand. I did get a letter today from the town planner. I don't know if it got in the file tonight.
I have a copy of it.
Let me just make sure if he's put it in here. Yeah. I have it by email. If you've got an extra copy, that would be helpful. Oh, that is the one? All right. This is the clarification one, correct? Yeah, this is, I believe this is in the file. Okay. That I do have. Thank you. Board members, you have the same. So according to the letter that's being issued right now, as recommended by the zoning board of appeals at the September 20th meeting, our staff at Ultra Sign Corporation contacted the town planner to discuss our signage proposal for Restaurant Depot at 100 Deer Street. After several modifications to the original design proposal, a number of signs now comply with the town sign regulations and have actually been issued signed permits by the building officials. We apologize for the confusion at the meeting as the, as the field agent was not familiar with the actual regulations or with the variance hearing process. There do remain, however, a limited number of signs originally proposed that we are seeking variances for. Our client wishes to be able to include the Restaurant Depot logo on all the directional signs as, as well as the additional wall sign over the main customer entrance on the southeast side of the building, adjacent to the parking lot. An updated signage packet has been prepared to indicate the signage, signs and notes above as we seek the variance. If you would, if you could go to that microphone and post this to the wall so that we know, everyone knows what you're doing. And in the meantime, I will get the plan, town planner letter up.
Would you like the pictures of the signage?
That would be helpful. It won't take a lot, yeah, just, you know, if it, if it's related to this, you can post that up. Why don't you go ahead and do that? In the meantime, I'll try and find Larry's directed letter.
Put it on the top of everybody's packet. It should be.
Everything but the original packet for me. I don't have it. Chairman's always the last to know.
As will be the vice chairman.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Let me just kind of briefly review this. This came from town planner, it looks like it's today. The applicant has amended the variance. The, in the interim, the applicant reviewed their application with me, made several modifications to the original design proposal. And based on those modifications, have asked for more of the signs and now comply with the signing regulations and have already been issued permits. The amended variance request is therefore limited to the following. So this is the clarity board members need tonight. Request for a second small wall sign over the main customer entrance on the southeast side of the building, adjacent to the customer parking lot, consisting of a circular logo and a rectangular text element. Limit is on one wall sign for each side of the building. Now, can you point that out to me? Is that?
This would be the entrance sign?
Yep. Okay.
For Restaurant Depot. As you can see, there's many doors, so it's going to help clarify for the customers where the entrance to the building is.
Okay. And then you have a request, circular logos to be added to each of the four already permitted directional signs at the main entrance drive, located adjacent to the monument ground signs. Limit for the DOT type traffic directional signs only. Recommended a favorable consideration for the second wall sign on the southeast side of the building because it is smaller and is to be mounted on the canopy covering the main customer entrance. However, as a wholesale facility and having no hardship whatsoever relating to the property, he recommends against allowing the logos on each of the four already permitted directional signs. So you're okay, his indication is you're okay with the logo on the main entrance. However, he's not in favor of the logo being added to the directional signs.
Okay. Well, with, with the logo on the directional signs is going to help the customers for pickup and deliveries, for them to be knowing where they have to go.
How big are these signs?
These signs are... All right.
I see. Eighteen inches by three feet?
Yeah.
See, are you, you talking about slapping it like a decal, a round decal on the sign?
No. It's just the logo is being added to the...
To the existing sign?
To the existing sign.
The existing directional sign. Is that, is that just a, is that just a sticker?
No. It's not a sticker. It's part of their sign.
Will they be lit? Are they lighted?
Uh, these, no. They are non-illuminated.
Okay.
Well, the sign, the sign's going to be the same size.
Yes. It's going to be the same size. They would just like to add their logos.
The logo's going to be exclusive to the existing size.
Oh, it's actually outside.
It is bigger.
It's bigger.
It's about a half a circle bigger.
Yeah. Six inches.
And the pickups for their commercial customers.
And the, and the maintenance of these signs? If they're hit by a truck, a car or?
Oh, us at Regency sign carry a warranty for Restaurant Depot to come right out and maintain them and fix them, make sure they're properly running.
Are these signs going to be conflicting with any other directional signs within the property?
No. They will not be a hazard to any public.
So I'm seeing, how many signs?
It's...
Directional signs?
Four.
Four?
Four. Four, but...
And there's no line of sight?
It will not create a hazard. It will not be in the line of sight for anybody, for any other commercial or residential traffic. It would create proper visibility for the Restaurant Depot customers.
Without the logo on there, this would just be a rectangular sign, right?
Yeah.
How much does that actually stick out in addition to the rectangle?
Um, honestly, I'm not that good with the measurement.
Six inches, I think.
So let's just say the sign is like this big.
Yeah.
It only comes out till about here.
Overlaps the main sign off?
Yeah. It overlaps the main sign.
Right.
By six inches.
By six inches. Ten, twelve inches?
Six.
Yeah. Six.
I'm not even like that. Sixty, thirty-six is forty-two. Six inches difference. Forty-two, thirty-six. That's it.
I hope we don't have to go through another, another process like this again.
I hope so, too.
This was, this was frankly, terrible.
I know. I came up from Long Island, New York tonight just to make sure this was done properly.
Where is the management in all of this? That's the problem.
Unfortunately, they couldn't be here because of a family emergency. I myself was able to, to represent the company. We do work with Restaurant Depot nationwide.
Well, the process of how they go about signage, which is an important part of any business model, clearly, this wasn't done properly.
Yes. Like the letter said, our staff at Ultra Sign Port, it was very confusing. They weren't really up to date with all the requirements and what the actual proposal was.
Right. Is this logo on all the signs nationally?
Yes, it is. Actually, I just went to go see that last night at my local Restaurant Depot to make sure that, you know, it's there pinned.
Okay. Anybody in the audience care to be heard on this application? I'll turn it over to the board members. Bobby, I'll start on your end.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Mark?
I'm good.
Paige?
I'm all set.
Okay. John?
I'm all set.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Have a motion to accept as submitted. Have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I second.
That's unanimous. Thank you for the drive from Long Island.
My son's here in college, so I didn't mind.
You got the bad side of college, right? Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm going to enjoy the rest of the year.
Okay. Thanks so much for, for coming in and clarifying. That was, that was great. Yeah.
I think the point more fitting is at Home Restaurant Depot than the sign company. I mean, we're both involved, but we're at Restaurant Depot.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
She'll hear, she'll get something within, does it 20 days?
Charlie, yeah, Charlie will get something within 20 days. Yes. You'll have something. It takes about, it takes about probably three or four days to get it out in the mail. And there's a 20-day appeal period. If someone comes in to appeal that decision, of course. I don't see that coming, but it does happen. All right. Thank you. This was the sign. Okay. Move right along.
Joseph's back.
Okay. That being after 7:15. That's the wrong one. Go back to last week's. Where's my, um... All right. This is on the application of Portland Street, Inc. For a special permit pursuant to section 3.7. Is this a continuance due?
Mr. Chairman, I was Joseph Antonellis on behalf of the applicant. I would respectfully request a continuance to your next meeting. Again, the surveyors in Milford are very busy and our plan, which we need to submit to you to show the topography of the property has not yet been completed.
Okay. So we're going to, we're going to, you requesting a continuance out to the?
To the November 8th meeting.
November 8th. We'll sign that, Joe. That would be great.
Thank you.
We'll make sure you got a copy of it.
Appreciate it. We'll see you on the 8th. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Aye.
Aye, Joe.
Will the abuders be notified? Does that need to be settled again?
Usually on, on one continuance, the abuders are not notified.
Right. If someone will leave Kelly your information, and we'll make sure you are.
Yeah. There's a lot of people here tonight about that.
You shouldn't worry about that land. A fatal impact. We've already had issues considering with the storm we had today and them clearing it. A bunch of trees on our street have fallen.
On the yards, all over the place.
Due to the land.
And... How is that?
This, we're not hearing this. It's being continued. So it's being continued till, till November 8th. If you want to give Kelly your information, we'll make sure that you get a reminder. Okay?
But that is a big damage to...
If there's something that needs to be handled, call the building department and I'm sure that they'll take care of it.
Can I ask a question? What are they allowed to do to start?
Why do they touch the land at all?
They, they are...
Well, I don't know what's going, I don't know what's going on.
So they already...
Well, they have the right to, anybody has the right to cut their trees. Anybody has the right to cut their own trees. Just like you have your own right to cut your own tree.
Our place.
Again, I, I haven't been down there. I don't know what's going on down there. But if you're talking about trees that were cut, they have the right to cut trees.
That's what we're doing. What can they do so far?
So if, if you've got a concern, get a hold of the building department. Let them know your concerns and then he'll relay it to the property departments to make sure we're going to be okay.
So they're already allowed to remove stuff from the property? Because they've already...
Any, any homeowner, if it's a homeowner, if it's, they can, they can cut trees on their own property, yes.
But can they, can they remove the land? Because I'm pretty sure that was listed on...
If you cut a tree in your yard and there's a giant boulder next to it and you can move it with a machine, you have, you have the right to do that. So I don't know what you're talking about, but...
But they moved it out of the land.
So what was the purpose of, of...
They talked about it.
What was the purpose of what was listed on the meeting tonight? Because it was about removing land and removing...
Again, you, you have as much as I have. This is what I have and they've asked for a continuance. So I don't have a lot of information. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, can I approach and show you some of the damages, the whole neighborhood?
Yeah.
We're not hearing, we're not hearing it. We're not hearing the hearing. We're moving on to the next hearing. My suggestion would be if there's a concern, to please get to the building department, Matt Markot. Let him know so that they can, they can at least address your concerns. We don't have, I don't have any power, we don't have any power over that. We don't have any power over, over someone's property.
Why we were called here today?
Yes.
As in a butter, there's, there was supposed to be a hearing. That hearing has been continued. So you will still have the opportunity for that hearing. Don't shoot the messenger. I'm just, I'm just, it's not, it's not, I have nothing to do with this.
I think what happened is that, I think what happened is...
I don't know what you're talking about.
There's a huge piece of land.
Yep.
That is already being cleared.
Yep.
And all the trees are being taken out and chipped for several weeks. And so it's already happening, but we thought we were coming to a hearing to determine what was happening. So it already happened. And then, as a result of today's weather and insane winds, all of the trees that are abutting all these people's property fell into their yards today.
Well, I think that, that will be addressed, I'm sure.
So I think it will be addressed. I think that it happened to be today. There was a significant event.
Yeah.
And...
That's what the frustration's about right now.
And the, the land was already cleared. So I think we were told to come tonight for a hearing.
Well, if you're in a butter, you got notified.
We were notified about it, but it's already happening. Like acres and acres of...
The rain just...
No. We're talking about the hearing.
No, the click.
We were notified that the meeting tonight was for them to be able to clear the land.
But they're already clearing it.
Yet they're already clearing it.
They're already clearing it.
There's a difference between cutting trees and actually...
There's no difference. That's clear enough.
They're not... They're right by there. Sir, you're saying cutting trees...
I don't know what's going on on the site.
You're saying...
You've allowed, you've provided us information that we can follow up and we will do that.
So I think that's what happened.
You're also saying they're cutting trees, but they're not cutting trees.
I do think it's more than cutting a couple trees. It is acres of land.
It's cutting them down.
And they're being chipped. And it's very disruptive and it has absolutely changed the landscape. That has already happened.
Okay.
So I think we came here tonight to say, did they jumpstart before this hearing? What are they allowed to do? You know, are they going to start blasting behind our houses without us knowing? Is where we're going.
I don't think that'll ever happen.
Well...
They can't do that.
They've got equipment in there.
They can't do that.
So...
They have the equipment in there.
So that's the, that's the...
You can, you can, listen, I, I'm not, I don't know what's going on. You're, if you want to bring an excavator in and you want to dig for a pool and if you've got to blast for a pool, that's your right as long as you have the proper permits to do that. All I'm saying is if you cut trees in your yard, you don't have to come here to cut trees. If you're going to blast or you're going to put a pool in, you need a permit.
Okay. So there's still permits.
This site is the same site as any other site in town. They're going to need a permit. They're gonna need a permit.
So what permits have they brought down?
I don't, again...
They didn't have any permits.
A continuance here. I don't know what they've done.
They put a road, basically, and cleared a lot of lands. Now we got...
I don't know if they put a road in. Again, I haven't been down there, but if this, but if the trees have infested into a problem, then that's gonna have to get addressed, of course.
So can you show us they have a permit of doing this?
Well, I, this is a zoning board. This is only for, they just, they could come in front of us and tell us what they're doing during the hearing. They show elevations, topos. That's what we hear on. They asked for a continuance. The hearing's not even open, so we can't even hear it because they've already asked for a continuance. So I'm sure we'll have more information the next time they do that, but I don't think that you're gonna see any blasting going on in any location, whether it's next door here or down there, without some type of plan and permit.
Did they just ask to continue us now, or they notified you ahead of time?
No, no, they, just now.
Because there was a lot of damage, and I think that's the reason they postponed it for now.
They don't wanna be responsible for this damage, sir.
I don't know, I don't, again, I don't know what's going on.
We have to just come to the town.
But what I would, what I would do, if you've got a question, you can contact the building department, you can contact town council.
Okay.
You have the, you have the mechanisms to be able to get more answers than I can give you, because I don't have any answers for you.
Yeah.
Okay? But stay on top of that meeting for the 11:08, please.
I'm gonna put a couple pieces of paper up.
Yeah, let's get their contact information, put it out there. Names, phone numbers, or emails, that would be helpful for us. All right?
We came here for...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next hearing is on, what do we have? It's on the application of John Lucas, 15 Roland Way.
They skipped from that way and from that...
Hold on one minute, let me get my... All right, let me read the announcement while we got it. This is on the application of John Lucas, 15 Roland Way, Milford, for variance from provisions of section 2.4, 2.5, or other applicable provisions of zoning bylaw, in relation to a parcel of land, 19 Beach Street Extension, and Archer Avenue, consisting of 20,000 square feet and 9,000 square feet of land, which is, which parcel is owned by John Lucas. Variance relief is sought to permit the subdivision of a parcel into two lots, one to contain the existing two-family residence and the other to construct a proposed single-family residence. Variance relief is requested from the minimum lot requirements where 15,000 is required, and 10,000 will be provided for each lot. An additional variance relief is required from the frontage of front lot and side lock from the required zoning bylaw. Any conflicts on this? Let me take a look at the application. I haven't seen this at all. What street is this? This is for 19 Beach Street Extension. State present use of the premises, so currently this is a two-family?
Yes.
Division of the parcel into two lots, one to contain an existing two-family and another lot available for single-family. Uh, let's see here. Concerning the question, uh, let's see here. Has a permit been refused? No. So they're going for relief for section 2.4 and 2.5, frontage and area to create two lots. Current zoning requires a minimum of 15,000 square feet. The lot in this instant parcel, one would contain 10, would also require relief for front, side, and rear setbacks for the existing dwelling. Parcel two would have 10,000 square feet. Applicants indicates this is a unique-shaped rectangular lot with a total of 20,000 square feet. The lot sits between the RA and IA districts. B Street is in the RA district, which requires 8,000 square feet for single-family. A lot, this lot has frontage on two different streets. Existing dwelling and garages are not central to the lot, but instead sits entirely on the eastern side of the lot with frontage on beach. What circumstances is gonna be allowed to be above? Without the requested relief, it would cause a hardship by preventing the use of an additional Okay, you're gonna need to kind of clarify the board on what we're doing here. You got something up there?
Yep.
By the way, let me just read this into the record. The planning board did review this at their scheduled hearing on October 2nd, and recommended an unfavorable report. I do not have the town planner letter in here. Do you have it? Town planner letter in here?
I don't think there was one.
It says attached, but...
Is it attached to yours?
I know, there was one.
Send one.
I don't have it. That's unusual.
I might have it.
If you've got it, that would be helpful. Let me see. This came from, oh, this was Joe, okay, this is town planner. The applicant requested a variance for allow for subdivision, a division of a conforming lot into two non-conforming lots. Property consists of a non-conforming lot from a 1911 subdivision plan that has subsequently been merged when the town adopted zoning. There are no conditions relating to the property that constitutes a hardship. Therefore, he recommended an unfavorable report. Okay, you can have that back. Thank you, Suzette. Let's, let's, the floor is yours, Attorney Ferreira.
Thank you. My name's Suzette Ferreira. I'm here from Kinzigley and Brocato. With me tonight is John Lucas, who is the owner of the parcels. He owns these two 10,000-square-foot parcels of land, and I say two 10,000-square-foot parcels rather than one large parcel, because right now, it is shown as two parcels on the assessor's map. It is shown as two parcels in his deed, and he's also taxed separately for each of these parcels. This is a unique-shaped lot inasmuch as it has frontage on both B Street and it has frontage on Archer Ave. The dwelling that's currently on the property, this is a, an existing two-family, but it's also somewhat unique, because if you look at the site plan, there is two buildings on the Beach Street side of the premises, and one is the main house, and the other parcel is where the second family is. So the two-family is not all within the same building. They are actually, there's a family in each building, which is not uncommon. We've seen that on Hayward Street and other older streets throughout town. As you can see, that the buildings sit solely on the Beach Street side. The dwellings do not sit in the middle of the lot or central to the lot. They all sit towards the Beach Street side of the, of the street, and the Archer Ave side is primarily vacant. There is a small overhang on the Archer Ave side, but we are proposing that that is going to come down. The other thing with this lot is that what we're proposing to do is now, we are proposing to create those two individual lots and have each lot be 10,000 square feet. Now, the first lot on Beach Street, it is already a non-conforming lot. Both dwellings on that lot do not conform. They're too close to the street, they're too close to the sidelines, but what it does have, it has 100 feet of frontage, which is required, and the side on the Archer Ave side also has 100 feet of frontage. Now, as I stated also, where this property is located, it is close to the RA and the IA district. In fact, all of Beach Street is in the RA district, and only Beach Street Extension is in the RB district, which requires the 15,000 square feet in area. Now, it would seem that at some point, this Beach Street Extension was probably part of the RA zone, because...
Quick question.
Yes.
Are you nine and nine, are you referencing nine and nine A?
I have that as well.
Because this is not an 8,000-square-foot minimum. These are all 10 minimums that are pre-existing. You referenced 8,000 in your comments.
I believe it's 12 and eight, David.
12 and eight?
The minimum requirement in, I said, what I said was the minimum requirement in the RA zone for a single-family lot is 8,000 square feet.
I do have this. Yeah, here you go. I added that.
Oh, so this is, okay.
Yeah, so that's not those. Yeah, I thought it was the other.
Yeah. Thank you. Isn't this just, just acquired not too long ago?
Um, it was about a year ago, about a year ago.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. It was acquired about a year ago. Even prior to acquiring the lot, these lots were already in the same ownership, and they continue to be assessed separately, taxed separately, and referred to separately in the deed.
Yes.
And what was, I was saying before, is the houses on Beach Street are already a pre-existing non-conforming, because they do not conform to the existing sidelines and frontage requirements. This is close to the RA zone. I believe at some point, it was probably part of the RA zone, considering that most of the lots on Beach Street and Archer Ave are more similar in size and shape to lots in the RA zone. That, you know, the fact that he is being taxed as two separate lots, but he is not able to use the second lot as a separate lot, so he does have a financial hardship in that respect. In addition, I think you have to look, the reason for the relief is you have to look at each of these lots as its own individual. Well, but you also have to look at the, at the where these lots are located. This lot, this new lot would have absolutely zero impact on Beach Street, because there would be no new residents on Beach Street. So there would be no impact to the traffic, no impact to that neighborhood whatsoever. The new lot would be located solely on Archer Avenue. Archer Avenue is probably one of the least congested streets in the town of Milford, considering there's only approximately four houses on that street. So would, again, one more house on Archer Avenue would not cause any detriment to that neighborhood. It would not cause any additional traffic or congestion. In fact, I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to drive by that before tonight's meeting, and if you drive by Archer Avenue, when you drive by that area and see that lot, it doesn't look like it's somebody's backyard. It looks like there probably should be a house there.
Except for a volleyball net.
Right. Except, which obviously would be happy to take that down. You know, since John has acquired the property, he has done some improvements. The shed was falling apart, so he has fixed that shed. Obviously, whatever he put on this new lot, he wouldn't be looking to put more than a three-bedroom, single-family house, and that new house would conform to all of the sideline and setback requirements. And again, even if the variance is not issued tonight, we still have the same exact issues with the house located on the Beach Street side of that lot.
Okay, anybody in the audience on this petition? Yes, sir, please state your name.
Rez to bind you 15 Beach Street Extension. How many, how many homes, how many structures are you gonna build on this?
There would only...
One on Archer Ave and one on Beach Street?
No, sir. There would only be one new, single-family home on Archer Avenue. Nothing else on Beach Street.
Single-family home?
Single-family home, yes, sir.
Okay.
The two-family you're referring to is the main house and the garage with the apartment above it?
Correct. That's the, so that would not change.
You get a picture?
Yeah.
Yeah. I drove by there and, and...
That's from the Archer side.
I'm having a tough time with this personally, and also from a zoning perspective. I'm seeing a portion of the building to be removed, but it looks like it's only, so you want to keep building number 19 and a half in full, with the exception of taking a piece of it off, correct?
That was like an attached shed.
If you're trying to get this, this has got to come down. The whole thing's got to come down.
The whole garage?
Yeah. You've got an apartment above that that was not even permitted. I went back, this hasn't been permitted since 1985, it wasn't even permitted. There's a, there's some type of living quarters on that second floor, and it's not, it's, there was never permits for it.
It's a two-bedroom.
It's what?
It's a two-bedroom apartment over, over the garage.
And I think prior to purchasing the property...
Is this, is this a multifamily too, the front building?
No, no. The first building is a single-family, and the second building is, houses the additional family, and that's what makes that lot a two-family. Now, even in that particular area, in the RB zone, two families are not allowed, but yet there's a number of multifamilies located on Beach Street already. So it makes sense that at some point, it changed in this area, but yet, this lot size, the size of the two parcels, is still more consistent with the smaller parcels in the RA.
I'm trying here, and you're not making it, you're not making it easy.
Both those properties permitted, uh...
Prior to purchasing the property...
We confirmed that those are legal.
Prior to per...
So there are, what were the things?
There's not, there's nothing going back since 1985 that had any permits pulled on that.
But was that an existing structure prior to 1985?
Could have been.
And I think...
Absolutely could have been.
Prior to them purchasing the property, I know that they did their legwork to ensure that that was a...
And I get the zoning back to the 60s.
Pre-existing, non-conforming.
What I'm asking is the board of health issues...
Correct.
They, they... They stick on the wall that says, you know, two bedrooms, whatever. Each one of those properties have that?
Yeah.
No, probably not.
You get, you get the board of health permit for each one of those units that it's a two-family.
Yeah, those yellow certificates. I'm not sure if I have the two for B Street. I'd have to check. But I know when I bought the property, it was last November, I believe, it did, we checked to make sure it was a legal two-family, or else we wouldn't have purchased it, and with the town, with the realtors and everything else, so...
Also, you're saying you're taxed on both those properties as single entities?
He gets, he gets two, he gets two tax bills.
With the tax bill on the, how does the town have that property? Is it buildable lot or not?
It's, it, I mean, he just gets a tax bill.
Well, I know, but, I'm sorry?
I have a copy of his tax bill. I mean, it doesn't say that it's a non-buildable lot. It's just, he's being taxed on the acreage for Archer Ave.
Well, some things I know in, in the...
And it has a separate address.
In the assessor's map, it'll, it'll tell you, assessors' cards, it'll say if it's a, a...
Again, I don't...
I don't say, I know, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it.
That really doesn't, yeah, I get it, I get it.
I don't think he's being taxed on it.
I would think, I would think if an applicant came in here, and they are looking to do something on a separate lot, to make this kind of conform better within the neighborhood, the proposal would have been to remove something in order to get what is needed. And I'm not, I'm not hearing that. I'm trying, and I'm just not, I'm just not there.
My question is, on the Archer Street side?
Yes.
What's that address?
Um, right now, it's...
Which is zero Archer Street.
Right. It's Archer Ave. It just says zero Archer Ave.
And the tax bill says what?
Zero Archer Ave. This is the tax bill right here. Yeah, it doesn't have, it doesn't have a number.
Rex, what number you?
15 Beach Street Extension.
Beach Street.
And the backyard of Archer Street is 19 Beach Street.
Correct.
That's right. So you've got zero Archer, and the houses on the left and right have numbers.
Yep.
And then you've got 19 Beach. So it's a separate lot?
I honestly, I'll be honest with you, I did not look. I wish I had gone into the, to the assessor's office, because it may have an address, but I didn't confirm that. But I do have a tax bill, and the tax bill does not have a number, so I don't want to represent that it does.
That particular...
So if you have, if you have a, a single-family in the front, then you have an apartment on the property. Now you're saying, because you can't build on this, it's a hardship?
It's still a financial hardship for him. He is getting taxed on that property as a single-family lot that he's not able to use.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I think you said you knew if that was a single-family lot or not.
It's irrelevant, because it's not, it's, it hasn't conformed today.
The address on Archer Street. How many square feet is the address on Archer Street?
It's the same 10,000 square feet.
10,000, it's listed, you're paying taxes, a 10,000 square foot lot on Archer Street.
Yeah, it's .23, .23 acres.
Do you have two separate deeds on this? You got copies of them?
I have a copy of his deed that shows that it's two separate parcels that's being conveyed.
You're trying to say that the Archer Street side falls under the category of 8,000 square feet in the subject?
I'm just gonna come...
No, sir. No, sir.
I don't want to belay it.
The only reason, the only reason I said, brought up the 8,000 square feet at all was because if this was located in the RA zone, it would only be required for 8,000 square feet and 12,000 square feet for the two-family, and it would comply. That's the only reason I brought up the 8,000 square feet, but the request is that both lots would be broken into, or, or kept as 10,000 square feet. Because we, that's how they are broken up right now, and that's how we, we kept them in filing for the request for the variance. But if I may, here's a copy of his... That shows the two parcels.
So Beach Street would stay at the 10,000-square-foot with the apartment behind it?
Correct.
And you want to put another house right behind the apartment?
I'm just referencing two separate parcels.
It would be, it would be within, it would be, it would be within the box, and it would still meet all the sidelines in rare requirements, so...
It's gotta be really close on that route.
Sure. But the building box is shown on the plan that I provided. So the new dwelling could be built within that box.
Could I ask another question?
Sure.
Is the building that's gonna be built, that's proposed to be built, is it gonna be sold or is it gonna be rented?
I haven't even gone that far, I've thought that far.
Assume, assume it's gonna be built and sold.
Well, the rest of the property's rented.
Right.
I'd probably sell it, if I had a guess.
And he has no plans on selling the Beach Street. His intent is to keep Beach Street.
Do you live at Beach Street?
I do not.
How many, now, Beach Street front house is a single-family, correct? That's a three-bedroom?
While, while other board members are salivating, anybody else would like to be heard on this? Regrettably, I'm just not there. I, um, I can't, I can't get there, not without that building coming down. Tim, you have any questions?
None.
Suzette, did you go back and see when it was rezoned?
You know what? I did try to go back. I did go through the zoning board regulations, but I could not find anything on that portion of Beach Street ever changing.
No amendments that you saw in the, how they list all the amendments?
I tried to look for it. I do. Yep, I went through all of them, and I... But this lot is certainly more in conformity with that zone than it is the RB zone. Even if, if you look at the plan that I just gave you, all of the lots in that area are similar in size and shape, and that a lot of them do not meet that 15,000-square-feet requirement.
Did you want, do you want us to vote, or do you want a continuance? Let, let me give you an opinion of what I'm, I'm seeing. And I, I'm trying. I cannot, down this road, that rental being here on the line and being able to support that. I just can't, respectfully.
Okay, I understand.
If you want to take an extension and think through it a little bit?
I think if you can clarify some of the things that we've...
Address on Archer.
Yeah.
Get some additional information, whether or not that existing apartment is a pre-existing conforming apartment.
Yeah, if the Archer, sorry, the B Street is a legal two-family, if it's, I mean, all this stuff we...
Then, Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully, respectfully request a...
Any questions?
Yes.
Will you check for that apartment building? Strong suggestion, try to find a building permit. And if you do find a building permit, see if they went through the proper channels after that permit, to see if it was legitimate, and that same is before, and it never went through the proper channels and became a two-family, which, from the way back, is the If that's seen this before, and if it went through the proper channels and became a two family, which, from way back, is the purpose of all the new zoning laws.
Mm-hmm.
So check that first.
Because they may have used the size of lot to support that, maybe what you're thinking. Okay.
Yeah, I, I, again, you know, sometimes these things are good just to try and wrap your head around it and, and see what can be, can be done better. I just, this doesn't look, that's my opinion, respectfully, so. Up to you. Anybody else want to be heard? Any other comment?
Then I would respectfully request a continuance and so that we can clarify some information.
All right, what I'll do, Suzette, since our, I have a form in here. We'll continue this to the eleven eight meeting. Then we can, you can sign that, we'll get it, we'll get it out to you, Suzette. Wonderful. Kelly, that'll be another one we gotta get out?
I'll leave a law seven one.
Okay. So, request a continuance. Anybody have a problem with a request for a continuance? If not?
No problem.
All those in favor? That's, you know, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Go ahead.
That'll be on the eighth too.
Eleven eight, right.
Okay, because we'll be out of the country.
You, you got my number, right?
I have your number.
You should have my number. If not, Kelly will give it to you. Kelly will give it to you. Nine two two nine six four four. What number you, I'll look through it. What number is he?
Yes.
Fifteen?
The lot is.
Okay. Okay.
That's it, yeah.
Easy.
Yeah.
Where's your, where's that hearing, those, again? No, no, the agenda. It's not in here.
Yeah.
September twenty eighth. There you go. Mary Carlson would have had this ready for me in a heartbeat. You know that, right?
Wow.
She would have laid that right in-
I handed it right to you as soon as I heard you.
This is on the application.
Being broken in.
Barlow signs, Barlow signs here? On the one fifty eight Greeley Street, Hudson, New Hampshire, for variance of the provisions of sections three point nine point six point one, and three point nine point six point two, and three point nine point seven point ten, and three point nine point seven point twelve. You got any more you want to put in here for me?
That's a lot of points.
Uh, on other applicable provisions of the bylaw in relation to a parcel of land at one hundred Medway Road, consisting of two point three five acres of land, more or less, which parcel was owned by Kevin Man Eight, Oxford Road Mendon. Relief is sought in order to permit the erection of a sign whose, whose computed sign area exceeds the amount allowed in the district. Yes?
Excuse me, Dave, I'm sorry. Do you want the clause in, oh?
AB four.
AB four, oh, the AB four, AB eight?
Yeah.
That would be US eastern time, Rex. US eastern time, not Italian time.
Right. Thank you.
You'd be in Italy six hours ahead, I believe.
District of a multi-phase sign and exceeds the number of various signs allowed based on the street frontage, towards which the signs are orientated or limited to by the provisions of the bylaw. I believe this has gone through-
Anybody in the room for any hearing just needs to-
Planning board reviewed the petition at their scheduled meeting of October second and recommended unfavorable.
I have one, I have one.
I don't see a town playing a letter on this one either.
They're killing us.
Do you have one?
No, they're killing us.
No, no letter. Okay. Let's see what we have here. The indication on the application, the signage area is a mult, is based on a multiple-tenanted building, apparently. Asking the question to the applicant what circumstances exist in relation to the parcel, and the applicant stated that this is a multi-tenanted building where the current businesses are going unnoticed, creating a hardship and confusion to the consumer as to the existence of the business on the property. Without proper identification, motorists traveling on Medway Road are misled by believing this building only has one tenant from the main road. The surrounding businesses have freestanding signs, and the building is located next to a cemetery in the construction site. So the variance not granted would cause a hardship. You indicate the sign would go unnoticed in comparison to other very large signs on the same street. Confusing motorists to believe that there may be only one tenant in the building would also keep this lot dark and less appealing. Signs of this scale already exist on Medway Road that properly identify their multiple tenants. With that, why don't we turn it over to you, kind of give us an indication of what you're looking to do?
Sure. Thank you for hearing the case tonight. My name is Craig Moore. I'm with Barlow Signs on behalf of the owners at one hundred Medway Road. And they, this building consists currently of various physicians, physician practices, and oral dentistry office, which is one of their main tenants, with a capability of holding up to fourteen tenants, I'm being told. They, the hardship, part of the hardship comes from the tenants that have raised concern over, over the, over the past years of not having signage or adequate signage to, to their patients and clientele. So we were asked to step in to help out with such a sign, and we're asked to propose a freestanding, double-sided freestanding sign. In doing so, we took into consideration surrounding properties, surrounding businesses, and what would be adequate based on this property size and the amount of volume that this, that this business and, or this building sees on a daily basis. One of the, one of the main concerns is, and when you're comparing this sign, as I have, I've personally gone up and down Medway and, and taken measurements of such signs. And the larger parcels that have multi-tenant plaza, or multi-tenants have a large sign out by the street, but they also have the availability to have, they, each storefront has its own, has its own facade that allows them to have a sign above their entrance. So they're getting double exposure. With the construction and the architecture of this building, it's very limited, and currently there's no wall signage other than the naming of the building of Home National Office Plaza. So with that said, you know, you're, you're dealing with two lanes on either side on Medway, as you're familiar with. You're, and if you've been to this property, it's actually got a small driveway that turns in and exits at the same, at the same time. So what we're trying to do here is get adequate, adequate signage or adequate advertising for these businesses so they can get people to, to recognize the location that they're going to. Hundred Medway, obviously, is at the top of the sign to give the destination, with the practices listed below. Gives ongoing traffic enough time to, to prepare and slow down before they have to turn into that, that narrow driveway. You know, some of the, some of the surrounding signs, as you're aware, Burger King, McDonald's, but also Medford Crossing and Milford Plaza and the gas stations along that road. For instance, the Medford Crossing sign is twenty feet just to the bottom of the sign. That sign's over forty feet high. And the Milford Plaza sign is, is roughly a forty-five foot sign with fifteen tenants. We're looking to try to put, populate this with fourteen tenants. And, you know, on one side, the, one side, the construction site, I think, is more or less more development, but it's, there's a bank there. On the opposite side of this, this business is the, is the cemetery. So there won't be any conflict with public interest, as we could see. Again, just looking at a couple of little notes with the hardship is the, is the narrow entrance and properly preparing the clientele that may be new to this practice or visit on a regular basis. No wall space, no real wall space for signage for this amount of tenants. And again, mentioning that this, this building is capable of occupying fourteen-plus tenants. And those tenants are deeply concerned with, with getting their name out on the street. And so, at this point, I'll leave it. The land, the, the area where the sign would be placed, there's an existing just decorative light pole. That would be removed. There's an island of land that we show on the site plan. The sign would be centered within that, so that there wouldn't be any, any need for encroaching on the street or causing any hazard to traffic. But other than that, I'll, I'll leave it open to questions.
How many tenants are in the building right now?
I have a list of fourteen.
There are fourteen that are in there right now?
Yes.
Can I see the list?
Yes.
I just think it's huge. How many square feet is the building?
I'm sorry, here's on my phone, that's a, that's a screenshot of the list. I think the bottom got cut off, but that's-
Twelve feet wide?
Yeah, like thirty-five feet high.
Thirty-four.
That's big.
Twelve.
Yeah, this is not a shop.
No, it's not a retail.
Not retail guys.
Come down. It's too big. It's not a shop.
Well, thanks. I'm, I'm sorry, your name, sir?
My name is Craig Moore.
Craig. Hi, Craig. The signs you noticed along the, the rest of Medway Road, I believe, and you can clarify, I believe they're mostly retail signs. Signs for retail businesses, not for office. I don't know of any office building along that stretch that, that has signage. I'm trying to think from the beginning of sixteen one oh nine, you know, Dunkin' Donuts and the plaza there and coming down. I, I just, if, if you know of any, that would be helpful for you to tell us.
No, I mean, actually, I think this is kind of a, this is a, I mean, it's even, part of its name is office building. I mean, it's, it's known for-
Yeah.
-multiple tenants of this capacity. I don't think there is another building to really compare it to. I think if you were comparing it to the, the other plazas that you're looking at, they're doing similar, they're not doing similar services, but similar business. I mean, it's advertising. You may not need to go see the oral surgeon today, but by driving by, you reckon, in name recognition and, and being able to make that call when it is time to go there is important to these places.
My doctor's in that building. I have no problem getting there and out of there. It's, it's way too big for that, for that side.
I agree.
I mean, it's not a two hundred thousand square foot shopping center. Is there something that can, that can work there that, that would, would be palatable? Yeah, I'm sure there is.
Yeah, I mean, even, even half the size, you know, that's, that's high.
Yeah, as I, as I mentioned, some of the other signs, I mean, just right across the street are twenty feet just to the bottom of the sign. Just for, just, that's, and that's not because they have that many tenants. It's because that's where your line of sight is when you're driving down that road.
And I guess my issue is that it's not retail. That's just me, though.
I agree with you.
I mean, if the board feels that they need some time, they've got to drive through there and take a look at it again and maybe-
I'm on the edge with this thing.
See if we can rework it, but it's just big.
Is there any, is there any flexibility on the height of this thing?
I, I think there is. It's, it's adequately, adequately just going to put these tenants. I know we're showing blank panels right now. I did share, I did share the list. But I mean, we don't want to get down to a two-inch text to try to fit. Right, so.
It's almost as high as the building.
The sign is as high as the building, just about.
On Fortune Boulevard, you have, you have pretty much smaller signs, just to reflect who's actually in there behind the streets, et cetera, et cetera. In this case, I'm assuming your tenants want to be knowing that they're there.
Well, this is known, this is known as the Home National Building.
That would be for location purposes. This is for sales purposes.
Is the sign still on the-
It's a little of both, actually.
Is there still a big sign on the side of the building?
Lettering on the building that just say-
It's big lettering on the building.
It says Milford, I mean, not, I'm sorry.
Home National?
Home National Off, yeah, Home Nationals, exactly what it says.
Exactly the change that's coming down?
It was not part of this proposal, but I mean, if that was part of the requirement, I could bring that back to them. What's that?
The clock's being moved.
Your, your Milford National.
Your Home National Clock?
I can see the need for a sign. I just think it's too big. I think if there's any way that you could rehash it and come back on it.
Why, I mean, I, I, listen, we'd like to work with the businesses in the community and make it work for everybody. I think this is just way too big.
What is-
I think we could work with something. Maybe we, yeah, maybe if we, we took another look at it.
Below the poll.
Dave, you got a comment on this?
I don't have a comment on this.
My, Michael?
I agree.
You agree too? But, I mean, if you want, we can, we can, we can continue it. Maybe the members can swing by there, get a vision on the thirty feet. Maybe we can work on something collectively. We'd be able to get it under control a little bit. That's pretty big.
Well-
I, I don't want to, I don't want to walk through here and give you a denial and then take them back.
Right. And that's not what I'm, that's not what we're looking for either. I mean, they need something.
Maybe you could, maybe you can tell them what would be acceptable to you guys.
Can I just-
I don't know.
It says Home National Bank. Is that always going to stay there? Since it's not even that?
I think that was just more-
Home National Office.
Home Nat, it says, uh, Home National Office Plaza, I think.
Plaza, yeah, I can see it right here. Home National Office Plaza.
Is there still a legitimate name to that? I mean, is that what the legal name is?
I don't know.
It's actually thirty-five feet.
Whoa.
Thirty-five feet high.
Would fifteen feet work?
I'd like to see half of that.
What's that?
I'd see half of it. Seventeen feet.
Seventeen feet?
I mean, it's, I think you're going to get, your name's going to be out there, it's going to be lit, you're going to see it at night. I do agree this, you know, like, like David said, we want to help our local businesses and, I'm not saying don't put anything up there, but I, this, that's a big sign.
You want to approve a seventeen-foot sign? Do you want, do you want to approve that?
Well, he probably wants to lay it out first and see what it's like.
Before we approve a seventeen-foot sign, I'm actually trying to reflect back on what is allowed by right for this location.
That was my next question. If you need, if you feel you want to work with this a little bit, come back on the eighth, and we'll, we all be on the same page with it. That probably wouldn't be a bad idea.
Right.
Now, you have an opportunity to kind of look at it.
Yeah.
If you, you know, certainly, I like to go by and take a look at it, but thirty feet, that's, that's thirty-five feet.
Is there a way of reforming any of the panels of the sign?
Well, you got thirty feet, then you got another three feet forest.
No, that's all total.
Total thirty feet.
That's all. There, there is pullout of measurements to get there.
Three feet on your, when you're at the thirties.
That's what it's-
Makes it thirty-three. No, it's thirty.
Okay, I'm like, I was like, okay.
Could you do a smaller, a shorter sign or a smaller sign, but reformat the panels in such a way where you get the same? There's got to be a way of-
Well, I think what he, I think what he's-
I think what would have to happen realistically, and this is without consulting with the client or anything, is you'd be talking about cutting these panels in half and to be able to reduce the, and I'm talking about left and right panels, you know?
That's what I'm thinking.
Something like that.
Or whatever your priorities are regarding your tenants. Some tenants, I'm sure, want more exposure than others. Have you got a sign guy?
And again, you know, I, I'm in office parks all the time.
Yep.
And there's an address they go to, and there's a big billboard in front of the building. Everybody goes, and there's no problem. And I get it, some of the times it's all office. Also, it's a lot of medical. So I, I get the challenge of having some exposure. And I, again, I have no problem trying to support something, but thirty feet, I, I, I'm not there. I'm just not there.
Okay.
So maybe what we should do is see what you, see what you feel the current bylaws are and what we need to help make that work for everybody.
That makes sense, so.
You know what I mean?
I, I, I do, and I think I-
Clearly, we can tell by the board members that they're not supporting it.
Yes.
And if you get a denial, then you got two years, you can't come back.
Like you said, and, and these, and these tenants are looking for some sort of exposure, one way or another. And so I think if, if I could ask, take a look at it, we'll go back to the drawing board. We'll work with the owners and see what we can come up with, and, and I would like to respectfully ask for a continuance next month.
Yeah, we'll continue till the, uh-
Is everybody okay with the width on this?
We got a continuance, so.
I know, but he, he needs some, something to work with.
What's the zoning there, by the way, now that we're all asking questions?
I did have a copy of some, it was, was it one?
IA?
IB.
Oh, it was the zoning, okay. I thought I heard before.
I'm just trying to find it real quick of what the, what the sign, freestanding sign height is in the IB.
Oh, I didn't see the height.
I'm just trying to get at. The IA, three point nine point seven point nine, not to, you know, do your job. That's a wall sign, sorry. One freestanding sign per street frontage, provided the aggregate of all freestanding signs does not exceed one square feet per foot of lot frontage. There you go.
Yeah. That, that doesn't maximize the height. I think that's just more of the, the overall size.
Okay, well. Well, then it says right here, the next three point nine point seven point eleven, freestanding signs shall not exceed thirty feet, so maybe you're okay.
I know.
But I think if you come prepared a little bit, like-
Yeah, because I showed the lot frontage, I think, as two hundred and thirty feet.
Oh, forget the lot frontage, because in this case, it, it doesn't matter for lot frontage. It's just saying freestanding signs shall not exceed thirty a night. So you might be okay.
Like I said. There you go. Here's your pen. You want to sign it? The continuance will be eleven, eleven eight.
Eleven eight, thank you. This doesn't take away any of my other rights.
Do me a favor, before you leave, will you make sure Kelly's got your email address?
How many feet of frontage?
There's a matter of frontage, it says thirty feet. Doesn't matter, it says thirty feet on the IA.
No, I know, but it doesn't say four square feet thirty.
Right, right, so, so that's, it's a good idea, we continue then.
Um, I don't know.
So that's, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you very much, we'll see, we'll see on the eighth. Anybody else have a motion to, uh, I think that's it on the hearings, correct?
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Motion by Tim to adjourn, have a second?
Second.
Okay, Bobby, all those in favor? Thank you, everyone, have a, have a great night, stay dry.